Go ahead, Robin.
Thank you.
Let me, um, let everyone in and then we can start.
Just a quick announcement for all the public, um, public members. The YouTube channel is not working. We're having technical difficulties. So I will let you stay in the Zoom meeting, but I will, um, close your video and mute. If you want to speak, please raise your hand and in the order that I see them, I'll let you speak. So if you can close your video and mute. Thank you.
I guess.
They said that the, um.
Yeah, that the YouTube doesn't work. They're going to keep us in. Thank you. Good luck. Yeah, I saw that he looks really expert bitched out in English.
May I begin?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. This is the regular meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission. Today is Thursday, August 19th, 2021. Seeing a quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. Madam Recording Secretary, please take roll call.
Good luck Victor.
Commissioner McNair? Here. Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Commissioner Vu?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez? Commissioner? Sorry. Olivares?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, members of the public may address the Arts and Culture Commission regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. Items within the sub, oh, sorry. No action may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Does the public have any comments they wish to share with the commission? Please know that you have three minutes to speak. We have, go ahead, Deborah.
Say, I believe our fifth commissioner has arrived.
Yes, I saw him. Thank you. Okay, I have Media Arts Santa Ana. Go ahead.
Yes, hello, everybody. Arts Commission, good to see you all again. Four things on my comment today. First of all, Santa Ana just declared this Chicano Heritage Month, August, and we're excited because on Saturday, we are presenting Alyssa Soto Mayor, the producer of The Rise and Fall of the Brown Buffalo, a great documentary about Chicano legendary activist lawyer Oscar Seta Acosta. And she'll be talking about bridging the divide with documentaries and we will be talking about how to address the recall, how to arm people with tools to make videos online to address the recall and inform our communities. That's Saturday at 11:30 a.m. You can register at massamedia.org. The second thing is that the OC Film Fiesta Early Bird passes are on sale. This year's festival is October 14th to the 24th, and you can also purchase the passes at massamedia.org. Third thing is that I wasn't able to attend last month's meeting, but I heard that you talked about doing a survey, and I just wanted to call your attention to the survey that was part of the master plan for two reasons. One, because it did, it was a result of a lot of community outreach, the needs that have not been met. But secondly, because I think, and I think this was a misstep on the survey's part, but one that serves us today because it actually allowed people to prioritize youth services. And I believe that the Arts Commission was created to fund professional artists in the art sector, which includes youth, but it's a totally different, um, set of needs and priorities. But this is good for us because right now the cannabis money is being allotted. They had a second reading and they're going to talk about it at the next council meeting. There was no money for the arts. The lion's share of the 10 million in cannabis money went to the zoo, Parks and Rec, and the library. But I do believe that we can make a good ask for 250,000 of that for services by these entities to hire local artists and arts organizations to give workshops and classes to the youth. A fourth thing is, I read in the pocket Downtown Inc.'s report of their July 14th meeting on the Art Walk, and I have to say that it is a gross misrepresentation of what happened and continues Ryan Smolar and Downtown Inc.'s misrepresentation of, um, you know, of the community dissatisfaction with their work. And so those who were in attendance, I know that Arts Commissioner Vu and, um, and former Arts Commissioner Gutierrez' work in attendance would know that there was much heated discussion and dissatisfaction from Art Walk vendors, residents, artists, arts leaders. And so we called for, our United Artists of Santa Ana called, and we provided a letter to the Arts Commission last month for an audit and an investigation of Downtown Inc., and we requested a response by July 29th. We did not receive one, so we've resubmitted it again with further commentary on this egregious report of the so-called community input from Ryan Smolar, which dismisses, censors, removes legitimate concerns, and that where public money is concerned, there needs to be transparency and an audit. And, uh, you know, like I said, just reading that report, I wanted to alert you, and those who were there know it was, it was a lot of dissatisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Next one is, um, I have, uh, 5HMI1.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Duran. I'm a professional artist who lives and works in Santana. I'm here regarding my concerns and experience with the lack of policy for artists in this community regarding copyright infringement, plagiarism, and intellectual property theft. I'm bringing this to your attention in order to protect Santana artists and their work, and also to prevent any legal liability or repercussions to the city regarding these matters. I'm asking the Arts Commission to prepare recommendations for the city council to create policy that is put into place to protect the intellectual property of artists, Santana artists, and also to prevent any legal liability or repercussions to the city regarding these matters. I'm asking the Arts to prepare recommendations and create a policy that affects all artists to seek safety for their intellectual property and in the arts community. Throughout my experience working as a muralist, I've had multiple encounters where my work has been replicated, appropriated, or exploited by other artists and entities without my consent as a creator and copyright owner. For example, a developer, community development partners, use my work from my born and raised Water Tower mural for reference in their presentation lookbook for the city's new La Placita Cinco development. And my imagery was used as an influence by another artist. The reason I know this is because they showed me the lookbook and the interior design company used for the project. The Santa Ana Unified School District hired another artist from the Placita Cinco project for a back-to-school banner at Santa Ana High School, and he used my key imagery from my love campaign for the banner. Once I presented a copyright infringement letter to the principal, the banner was taken down immediately to prevent any further damages or legal actions. The artist responded by directing his Anaheim Hills lawyer to threaten to sue me as I asserted my claim and indicated that I'll be responsible for paying his significant legal fees if I lost the case. As a member of the creative community, I've witnessed countless of artists being exploited by organizations that reside in the city and are a part of the downtown bid. This causes Santa Ana's homegrown creatives to self-isolate, not share their work, flee, and leave the city due to the lack of policies in place that protect creatives and their intellectual property. I'm requesting that the Arts Commission bring these matters to the attention of the city council immediately and create a policy in place to protect the creative community and creative industry. In my examples, two of these cases involve projects that were funded by the city of Santa Ana, and the city could also be legally liable for the use of these works without my permission. This kind of activity happens a lot in Santa Ana and risks the city getting the reputation of being a place where artists, artist ideas, and their intellectual work are stolen. This damages both the city's reputation, as well as the efforts to the city and the Arts Commission to promote Santa Ana arts-friendly city. Additionally, as I mentioned, it causes local artists to hide their work rather than risk it being stolen, which impacts their careers, livelihood, income, and professional visibility. These matters need to be treated with urgency since it affects the livelihood of all creatives and arts economy in Santana. I'll be happy to speak with you further on the matter and put you in touch with experts in this area in order to create policy that protects Santa Ana artists, their intellectual property, and their freedom of expression. Thank you for your time, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Porcha Peña. Go ahead.
Hello, how you doing? I'm Porcha Peña. I'm a community leader for Pacific Park Eastside, one of the South Main neighborhoods. So, um, thank you so much for including historical considerations in the South Main art proposals. I encourage you to select, to make selections that do reflect and, and celebrate our South Main history, as well as the, you know, rich cultural legacy of the residents residing in that area. I also want to talk about revenue because, you know, we've, uh, there were several asks on the part of, you know, past, uh, Commission Chair Gutierrez, you know, and, uh, and past Commissioner Harris and others, you know, for additional monies from the city's budget for arts and culture. And, uh, it doesn't, you know, seem like that was too successful. You got money for some events, but I think it's important that you have some operating money, you know, some money for professional development for artists. As you saw, there's a need for artists to have some kind of, you know, legal, like legal education or, you know, to have knowledge or workshops about the legal protections on their work. So I just want to offer three suggestions for getting revenue into the Art Commission. One is to participate in the Americans for the Arts Art and Economic Prosperity Study. It's $9,000, and it's a way that finally the city of Santa Ana can quantify the, uh, contributions and tax revenue that the creative sector brings into the city. Once you know how much economic impact the creative industries have in Santa Ana, and there's a lot because, uh, most of Orange County's printers are in Santa Ana. Most of the graphic designers are in Santa Ana. You know, so there's a lot of industries that you would not think are arts and culture, in addition to museums, cultural organizations, you know, performance art organizations. There's a lot. Once you quantify it all, I think you'll see that there is a significant, significant economic impact. Then you can make a really informed ask for a percentage of that as, as a revenue, as an investment in the sector. Two, film and TV production. Currently, this area is managed by Parks and Rec, but they really don't do anything to market the city as a, as a TV and film location. A lot can be done if Parks and Rec partnered with the Arts Commission, had a presence at Location Expo, had a presence at the different many conferences and showcases for locations. Because of COVID, a lot of the LA production houses don't want to shoot in LA and they don't want to leave the state. So Orange County, Santa Ana, with your historic, with our historic downtown and our wonderful, uh, you know, built environment, really offers, has a lot to offer, and we're only 38 miles away from LA, almost within the studio zone. So I urge you to make that partnership happen. That's some revenue. And three, cannabis, as was mentioned, in our arts master plan, it was repeatedly mentioned that, uh, the arts should support youth and youth, and, uh, youth arts and culture programs. Well, this is a great way for the Arts Commission to make that ask for that percentage of cannabis money. It should be administered through the Arts Commission. You could take a percentage for administrative costs and, um, and then, you know, run those youth programs, those youth art and culture programs. And at least you get a little bit of revenue that way as well. So just wanted to make those three suggestions and encourage you to, uh, keep those historical considerations and cultural considerations up for your future selections up in Maine.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Brian Peterson. Go ahead.
Hello, Arts and Culture Commission. My name is Brian Peterson. I'm the founder of The Faces of Santa Ana nonprofit here in the city and also Brian Peterson Arts. Just wanted to bring something to your attention that I worried might actually come before the Arts and Culture Commission. We had a wonderful reveal at Santa Ana High School a couple of days ago. I partnered with about 10 students and revealed a banner based on them sharing their personal truths. After we hung the banner in front of the school on Saturday, I received a cease and desist letter from Kimberly Duran, who we heard from in the beginning. And she was claiming that the Love Hands that were one of the hand notions on the banner were copyrighted by her and her team. The first thing I did was, of course, seek legal counsel. I have a lawyer that I worked with, so I sent Kimberly's letter threatening to sue me for up to $150,000 to my law team. And meanwhile, Kimberly corresponded with the principal and had the banner taken down. And so I just wanted to follow up with the commission here, let you guys all know that I actually sent the letter from my lawyer, who just so happens to be a copyright expert, and nobody actually owns the copyright to doing Love Hands on anything. We put together a document with about, I think it was 42 examples of Love Hands on murals and digital artwork all around the world. And so I'm just here to bring to your attention, this comes before you. You do have an email with my correspondence from my lawyer on the exact copyright laws that were not infringed upon. And, um, we are hoping to get the banner up. It was an incredible project. We had students crying, teachers crying. Um, it was an incredible experience of kids really showing their hearts and their bones. And, um, I've been an artist here in the city for, um, since 2012. I've done over 25 murals. Um, I never intentionally, um, sought out to do Love Hands if somebody else did them. It actually was a request by a client of mine, but I just want to bring to your attention that this is happening in our city. Kimberly hasn't directly responded to me on any of my emails. We asked for her copyright documents, and she hasn't responded to my law team, but, um, I hope this can be resolved. I am someone who believes in lifting up artists. I am a professional artist. That's how I make my living. I've lifted up and built up artists alongside me, and I wish nothing but the best on Kimberly and every other artist in Santa Ana that strives to just get their creativity into the world. Just thank you for hearing out sort of what's going on, and, um, it has obviously reached your desk, so, uh, thank you for having me on.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, and next we have Skeeth Dewine. Go ahead.
Okay, hang on one second. Let me see if I can get my camera on. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I don't know if the camera's working, but we're not going to worry about it. Hey, real quick, um, so I'm the founder of the Artist Walk back in the 90s. But on the, um, I just want to address the RFP for the Santa Ana project. And I know that some of us were under the gun, and my project was very complicated. And I just wanted to let you guys know that it can be broken down into smaller pieces. And there was so much information put into the packet, especially dealing with issues of graffiti and tagging of any of the public artwork. And there were solutions put in there, either with a large movie cinema screen or without and bringing and leasing out some sort of a, um, inner tube type screen. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. Um, I noticed you guys are having some issues with your funding from the city, or at least that's what I'm hearing. Um, I have a meeting coming up with the, um, city manager for a real estate project I'm going to pitch to the city. At that time, if there's something you guys want to put together for funding, I can also slip that into the conversation when I meet with the city manager. So I just want to lay that on the table and say, um, I will see what I can do to help other ways. And I think if they see an artist and someone that created the Artist Walk and the train station district and is now is doing real estate in the city, they're going to be pretty responsive when I say, hey, look, we need an economic impact and show how much money the city brings or how much money the arts brings to the city. Okay? I'm done.
Thank you, Skeeth.
Okay.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments, I believe. Right, Bianca?
Okay, that is correct.
So moving on, this is the time for the commission to consider matters under the consent calendar. Items one through five. Do I have a motion to consider items one through five?
I move.
Commissioner Russell, do I have a second? Thank you.
Um, I actually have a question. Are we, um, making this motion to approve all of them at once in a batch?
Yes. That is correct.
So if I notice, um, some mistakes in the minutes, would I object?
So I, I think that we need to second it, and then we have a discussion. And if we need to pull any items from the consent calendar, do we do that before we vote on it? Okay, so, so I guess if you want to pull an item from the consent calendar, so we don't do it as a batch, then what, which item would you like to pull Commissioner Vu or items?
Item number one.
Okay. Are there any other commissioners who would like to? Or pull an agenda item from the calendar? So I think we need an amended, amended motion, correct? So items two through five, can we vote on those or we do, do, do we discuss the number one first?
We can approve items through five, and then I can note that item one was pulled for, um, for the discussion. And then at the end, we can vote all together.
So, let's get another motion on the table to consider items two through five. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Joseph. Thank you. Okay, so, um, so Madam Recording Secretary, please take roll call for the vote. Commissioner McNair? Yes. Commissioner Vu?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Olivares?
Yes.
And Commissioner Russell?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. So seeing on the table, we have a matter about consent item number one. Please share with us, Commissioner Vu, your, your amendments to that item.
Um, yes, so on page, so this is page, I believe, two of the, um, of the agenda or the proposed minutes, uh, it says on the business calendar, item number five, that the members appointed on the Art Walk ad hoc were Jose Hernandez, Nogobu, and Andrea Harris. That should be double plus.
I'm sorry, I missed the very last thing you said. It should be.
Instead of Andrea Harris, it should be double Russell.
Oh, thank you for that amendment. So Bianca, can we make an amendment in those minutes?
Yes, I will, and I will be, uh, rescinding them.
Will that be what we vote on next meeting?
The, yeah, the correction will be made, part of the minutes, and it will be included in the next, um, in the minutes from this meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we have three items tonight under work studies session. Please note that there will be no motion or action taken on these items. The first item is a presentation on parks, recreation, and community service agency permit processes for events and filming. This is what we have asked for in previous meetings. The second item is a presentation on the Santa Ana Parks Master Plan. And the third item is discussion of the ARPA funding for arts and culture. Does staff have any comment? Nope, sorry. That's it. So we move on to the presentations for our work study session. So, Tram, who's doing the Parks and Recreation and Community Service Agency Permit Process?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Sonia Batres. She is the, oh, I'm gonna let her introduce herself. Go ahead, Sonia.
Thank you, Tram. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Can everyone see that? Great, perfect. Um, my name is Sonia Batres. I'm the Community Events Supervisor under Parks, Recreation, and Community Services. Um, just really briefly, um, I'm really happy to be here. My, um, experience working for different cities was actually starting with the arts. Um, uh, under arts departments for various cities, so, and I do have an arts background. I'm a painting major, so I ended up in, uh, Parks and Rec. So I'm happy to be here, uh, working with all of you and, um, sharing with all the fellow artists here on the group. So excited to help you all with your special events. Um, so we'll go ahead and get started on the presentation. Um, so I'll be going over the special event permit process. Uh, the types of permits under, um, my office would be, uh, special event permits and film permits. I'm going to go over more, uh, more on the special event permits because film permits is very similar, uh, to the special event permits. Um, and we'll go over a little bit about the film permits a little bit later, but for special permits, uh, you might ask like, what is a special event? So basically, anything that's larger than a picnic reservation would fall under the special events office. This can include, but is not limited to the following. So for example, let's say you're going to have vendors, exhibitors, you're going to have sponsors at your event. You want to serve food, whether you're going to sell it or give it away for free. You'll have live music, some sound system, a DJ perhaps, generators, stages, or other equipment, raffle drawings, uh, maybe ticketed admission, and canopies and other large structures. So this is just a sample of some items that you might have at your large-scale event. It's not a exhaustive list, but, um, it's a start. And I'd be more than happy to work with you on determining if your event would be considered a picnic reservation or a special event. For film permits, we do provide film permits for commercial filming and photography. It includes student filming. We have private, uh, property and public property permits. Uh, and this does not include news gathering. So for news gathering, it means like if Channel 7 wanted to come down and was doing a story, they do not have to request a, uh, film permit. They just come down and film. Uh, so that's a little bit more what's referred to as news gathering. So the first step is to submit a special event application. Uh, the application should be submitted at least 45 business days before the proposed event date. It is, uh, important that the primary applicant be the same individual business or organization on the insurance. Sometimes that might change later on in the permit process, so it's really important to know whoever's providing the insurance should be the primary applicant on the application. Um, attaching a site plan with your application helps to expedite the review process. It allows us to, uh, review what location at the park you want to use. So as you know, the park is really, really large, so, um, having a site plan of exactly how you plan to lay out your event will help expedite the review. If you don't have a location, you can always leave it open and will help suggest locations that best fit your activity. So if you're wondering who reviews these requests, um, it's a combination of several groups. The special events team, uh, which is our, the main processing office, will review your requests. The parks team, which is composed of like the park supervisor, will review the request to ensure there aren't any conflicts with, um, maybe park or, uh, center activities. Sports reservations, as you know, a lot of our parks have fields and diamonds, and, um, we want to make sure that the event will not have a conflict with any sports reservations. Park maintenance is very important because, as you know, we have construction, um, and we might have some maintenance, uh, scheduling happening at some of our parks. So we want to ensure that there aren't any conflicts there. Uh, police will review your requests to ensure it's something safe that can be conducted at the park. Public Works Art, um, which is, um, our traffic engineering department, would also review. For example, if you were doing a car show, or if you were closing a street or modifying a street, they would ensure that you could do so safely. And also OC Fire, um, Orange County Fire Authority would, uh, sometimes be involved in the review process at the beginning stages. For example, with our stadium, which is obviously a, a huge venue, we might, uh, connect with them in advance of your request to ensure that it can be conducted safely at the stadium. The review typically takes about three to five business days. Um, but for some larger scale events that have multiple components, it might take longer. So if you are planning a large festival or something that has multiple components, I do recommend, um, applying as early as possible so that we can review it together and give you a, a response as soon as possible. So your request is approved. So once we evaluate your application and your request is approved, the next step the next step is a pre-event meeting. So pre-event meetings are typically about thirty minutes, and now we handle them through Zoom. So you don't have to come all the way to City Hall now. We can do it through Zoom. Uh, we usually have you invite any team members, uh, that you would like to participate in the meeting. And we also invite representatives of our parks, team, park maintenance, police, traffic, any other representatives that might be beneficial to be part of the meeting and can provide valuable input. Um, at this meeting, uh, we will cover the following. Um, all details of your event to ensure your permit is accurate. As you know, sometimes when you're applying for an event, there could be a lot of changes. Uh, so we wanna make sure if there's been any changes that we can review that together. Um, any required modifications or changes. Um, so sometimes, you know, there might be a really great idea to have, for example, um, to close a street with a park event. But, um, you know, sometimes we do need to do modifications for safety or other concerns. Um, so any changes we discuss at the meeting. Um, and also, um, would we review all permit requirements? So we'll make sure that you understand everything that will be required, uh, for a permit to be issued. So, uh, permit requirements, um, as mentioned, these are very similar to film permits. So I'll go ahead and, uh, go over these requirements and then I'll add what is kind of like a little bit of the difference between, um, the special event permit and the film permit. Uh, so first off, we would need your site plan. Site plan should indicate where all your equipment's going to be located, generators, portable restrooms, um, canopies, uh, parking, if you're gonna be doing any VIP parking or volunteer parking. So basically, a site plan's gonna give us a really good picture of the scale of your event and what you plan to bring into the park. Also, what locations you plan to use. Uh, traffic plan, if you are modifying a street or doing a street closure, um, you should include your traffic plan. Um, typically, this is created with your traffic control company, and it is reviewed by our traffic engineering department. Um, certificate of insurance and additional insured endorsement. A lot of you may already be familiar with this. Um, it's required of both, uh, special events and film permits. For, uh, film permits is only for public property. We do not need insurance for private property. Uh, Santa Ana Business Licensing. So this is a requirement of both the primary applicant and also any participating exhibitors and vendors. So I get a lot of questions of who needs to have a Santa Ana business license. Basically, anyone who's going to be on site, and it doesn't matter if they're gonna be selling or if they're gonna be providing out marketing material or information. Everyone needs to have a Santa Ana business license. Um, if they're a business or nonprofit in Santa Ana, they should already have a Santa Ana business license. Um, if they're outside of Santa Ana, they can apply for a temporary license. And, um, I'll provide the contact a little bit later in the presentation for that. Courtesy Event Notification. Um, so to ensure that, um, the neighborhoods and surrounding businesses of the park or venue where you plan to have your event, um, are notified that you're having an activity, we do ask that you send them an email letting them know the date, the time, what type of event you're having, and a contact person in case they have any questions. This is something we've been doing for the last couple of years, and it ensures to mitigate any complaints. And, uh, the neighborhoods and businesses really appreciate that we're notifying them when there's going to be a large scale activity at their local park or venue. And we'll provide those contacts for you. Um, once your event is approved. Um, lastly, approval through the OC Fire Authority. So the Orange County Fire Authority is a separate agency than Parks and Rec. And they have their own special event permit, uh, process and evaluation. So you do have to apply directly through them. And, um, we'll go over that in a little bit. Also, approval through the Orange County Healthcare Agency if you're having any food or beverage distribution. So whether you're selling or giving out food or beverage for free, you do need to get approval through the Orange County Healthcare Agency. And lastly, a payment of permit fees is the last permit requirement before your permit can be issued. The average cost of a special event. So for special events, costs can vary between eight hundred to two thousand plus, depending on the location, the length of the event, staffing requirements, and any additional requested amenities that you might add. Co-sponsorship of park fees can be requested by qualifying groups. And if approved, may cover twenty-five to a hundred percent of park-related fees. It does not cover staffing, police overtime, or any other associated fees. And it would only cover park permit fees or rental fees of the park. Uh, deadlines. So, um, all payments, documents, and approvals must be submitted to the Special Events Office at least two weeks before your event date. A permit will be emailed to you once all items are submitted. Um, other city departments and partner agencies may have differing deadlines. So I, uh, I do recommend that you connect with those agencies to ensure you meet their requirements. They are, once again, separate from our department. Um, so I do recommend you connect with them. So for example, some of these other, uh, uh, city departments, business tax. So if you're going to be having a lot of vendors or exhibitors, I recommend connecting with business tax early. And here's a contact for business tax. Orange County Fire Authority, same thing. Uh, they have their paperwork that you would need to complete and attach your site plan. And lastly, Orange County Healthcare Agency, same thing. They have their documents for depending on the type of food or beverage that you're going to have. Um, for, if you'd like to download an application, you can visit our website here at, uh, sana-anna.org/parks/eventsplanning. You can also email us at specialementss@sana-anna.org, or you can give us a call. We'd be more than happy to send you an application. We can also send you all the paperwork for, um, uh, business licensing or for fire. Um, anything else that you might need, we can send you a checklist that you have that in advance. And, um, uh, briefly, for film permits, the only, uh, difference between the film permit and special event permit is obviously on the film permit application, we do ask for details for the content of the filming, um, which obviously differs from a special event, and also location agreement. So if you do have a, if you're filming at a private property, we do, we do need to know that you have permission to be, uh, on site. So we do ask for a location agreement from the private property owner. But that is the only difference between the special event, uh, permit and the film permit. Does anyone have a question?
I do.
Yes.
Um, so when it comes to the film permits, is there, are there parameters like there are for the event permit in terms of size or amount of equipment or anything like that?
Um, there, uh, we don't have, uh, like parameters as far as I'm as much equipment as you, you know, like if it's too big or too small, we really review it on a case-by-case basis. Um, we've had, you know, really huge productions from HBO, Warner Brothers, with two small-scale, uh, student films. So we really have a little bit of everything.
What, what if, um, there was an artist who was just filming, I mean, even with a phone, uh, camera on a phone, uh, a mural, let's say. Um, it wasn't part of a bigger project of any kind, but would that person be subject or required to get a permit if they were just sort of filming a piece of artwork in Santa Ana?
Um, no, not if it's not a good commercial production. Um, yeah, if it's something done like with an iPhone or something like that. I mean, of course, we can't, um, patrol every filming that's occurring in Santa Ana because we do cover the entire city. Um, but if it's not for a commercial production or project or a student production, um, then there really isn't a permit for that.
So I have been told that an artist here in Santa Ana was filming something for a documentary, basically, but, um, and was fined by the police, Santa Ana Police, um, because he didn't have a permit.
Uh, I wasn't aware that there was a fine for that. Yeah, so that's something that if you'd wanna send me that information, I can look into that a little bit for you.
I will do. I'll do that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Sonia, for a great presentation.
Oh, no problem. Nice to see you, Robin.
Nice to see you too. And, and this is so helpful for people to be guided through the process. So one of my questions has to do with, uh, is this information, is this presentation gonna be available to the public? Can we put it on our Arts and Culture Commission website or share it publicly in some way to help guide people and direct them when they have questions to be able to do events and filming?
Um, I created this presentation specifically for the meeting, but we are working on a special event guide that's gonna be coming out this year. And we're also revamping all of our applications to kind of make the process a little bit simpler. So that will be coming out, um, later this year. So I mean, I'd be more than happy to share this presentation with Tram so she can forward it to the commission. But as far as to the public, we are revamping, um, our, we're having a guide and we're revamping all our applications. And so we'll make sure to have that available to everyone.
Fantastic. My last question is, when you say student productions, what eight, what are you talking about college or dipping down into the, um, K-12 schools?
Well, most of the student productions that I get is, um, college.
Okay.
Um, with the, um, I can also provide permits for youth, um, but I don't really get that many, to be honest with you. Usually, it might be, um, you know, I do get some like da- uh, uh, dance performance groups or dance schools that wanna do like a music video, and that's usually comes through the school, not the individual student. So most of the time, it's through the school. Um, but, um, I wanna say nine out of ten, it's really, um, college level.
Great, thank you so much.
No problem. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions too. Hi, Sonia.
Hi.
Meet you.
Yes, nice to see you in person.
Um, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more on, uh, you mentioned it, the, the co-sponsorship of park fees. Uh, what is the process for requesting that? Um, and what and how and, and how is it decided how much of the park-related fees are covered?
So we have a co-sponsorship form. It's a one-page form. It's very simple to complete. Basically, it's letting us know what type of event you're having, um, a little bit about your organization, and, um, also explaining what the financial need is. Um, basically, our department will review the request and see if it's something that we can co-sponsor. As I mentioned, it is on a case-by-case basis. Um, but if it's something that's connected with the mission of, of our, our agency, if it's something that advances, um, you know, Santa Ana youth and adult residents. Um, also, if you're a nonprofit, um, uh, agency, all of those are factors. Um, but I always recommend groups to always apply and have it evaluated. Um, and, um, a lot of the times, we do provide as much support as possible. Um, if you're trying to do, um, a, you know, free community event, um, we do try to provide as much support as possible.
Thank you. That was the only question I have.
Any other questions?
Actually, um, on that same point, um, for co-sponsorship, does that only apply within the parks? Or would that apply on, um, public property anywhere in the city?
Um, co-sponsorship is only for park-related fees. So currently, the program only covers, um, like, for example, if you're having your special event at, um, Birch Park, for example, it's gonna, it's not gonna cover staffing fees. It doesn't cover police fees, traffic control, uh, business licensing, all of those other fees it wouldn't cover. It would only cover, uh, special event fees and, uh, park rental fees. Any other questions? Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay. Our next presentation is on the Arts, Santa Ana Parks Master Plan.
Hi, I'm Cindy Vendoza. I'm MIG's Director of Parks and Recreation Planning. And it's my honor to be working with the city of Santa Ana on their Parks Master Plan update. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, which will load here momentarily, so that we can talk today with just a brief overview on what the Parks Master Plan is all about, an overview of the planning process. We're gonna talk briefly about arts and culture in general and park systems across the United States, and then leave time here at the end for not only questions and comments, but a few discussion items that, uh, I would love for you all to address if we have time so that we can provide your feedback and integrate it into the master planning process. This is a ten-year plan, looking forward into the future to identify needs for parks, facilities, trails, programs, and open space. It's an investment strategy, and it's important in that this is Santa Ana's very first Parks Master Plan. So it's our first attempt to guide the types of programs and projects that are needed moving forward. And what I want you to realize is when we talk about, uh, parks and art, there's certainly a nexus between them depending on your definition of art. For example, the playground at the left, we are finding that playground manufacturers are looking to get more and more artistic and thematic in the way that they express play opportunities for youth. And those types of opportunities are carried throughout the park system. Our planning process is a four-phase process that's anticipated to take a little over a year. We just about wrapped up with phase one and had already started the outreach that's associated with the phase-two community needs assessment, which really helps us identify through a technical analysis along with outreach, community priorities for the future. So phase three is about documenting our recommendations and priorities so that we have an adopted plan to provide guidance for the next ten years. There are several steps in terms of the park master planning, including the inventory of assets that include arts, the priorities and preferences, gaps and needs, ten-year vision, strategies for improvement, and investment priorities going forward. And so we wrap all of this into a planning process. It's really grounded in what the community would like to see for itself. We just wrapped up a survey with over a thousand two hundred responses. It was available in three different languages and asked questions about the types of priorities that we have for the park system. There also is a fabulous website setup that provides some information with regards to the master plan, contact, uh, and opportunities to be involved, to be able to provide feedback for the planning process. Really, this park master plan focuses on what you associate with traditional park elements. You know, parks and open space, the numbers of amenities and recreation facilities in parks, uh, trails that connect parks, as well as the community center, swimming pools, and other major facilities. But an important part of this are also the programs and events that activate parks. And we often think about those in terms of recreation. But this is for a department that also includes community services. And as we just heard with regards to the permitting process, there's overlap between what they are doing and arts provided across the city. And this could be a program like arts classes, but it could also be a public arts program, as we see many cities providing where there is support for local artists. And then, of course, looking at the operations piece, which we heard about in one of the public commons, it's important to recognize that it's not only about the, uh, amenities and facilities you have, but then how you take care of them moving forward. We look at the park system through several different evaluation lenses. The one that you probably wanna pay closest attention to is actually around community identity. Because we want a park system that is welcoming and inclusive and responding to unique community needs. And art is critical in the way that it helps do that. So certainly, art is an important component of this planning process. And even in terms of the partnerships and collaboration, when we're talking about activating your city to, uh, provide activities for residents, it is those partnerships, often through events, that are provided by others in parks, hence the need for the permitting system, that really is an important part of the ways in which we use our parks and green spaces to support community identity. As you well know, uh, arts, culture, and programs are an important connection to diverse cultural heritage. And it is a heritage as well as a history of a community that we like to call forward. And that, again, parks have a role in helping support. It's interesting when we talk about arts and cultural programs with the, uh, Parks Recreation and Community Services Agency. One of the things they note in terms of the programs they provide are really the recreation and enrichment activities such as art, music, and culture programs, uh, such as the ones that you see noted there, and is even visual and performing arts classes. But one of the things they recognize is that even with partnerships with local museums, there's a lot more that they could be doing and that they have done in the past to sponsor programs that really support the arts, whether it's for youth or for other citywide. So with that in mind, uh, we're going to take the opportunity to just very quickly share some images of what is happening across the country in terms of trends in art and public spaces. And so a lot of these are focused on art in parks. But as parks, we also include along trails in public spaces, and even through public-private partnerships that are between, uh, parks departments as well as other private providers. So we hear a lot about, you know, art that occurs in amphitheaters, for example, um, and the types of programs associated with that or at events. But a lot of the trend is moving towards supporting local artists and really establishing that identity of the park system, the community. This is a new dog park, for example, and an example of a, a very permanent sculpture that went in, uh, associated with the dog park. But a lot of art we're seeing nowadays is more temporary, such as this chalk art competition, where you invite artists to create in a, a temporary way on, you know, the sidewalks and plazas in the community, an expression of their art. We see a lot of functional art, again, through shade sales or playground features or amenities and facilities in parks. We've even seen drinking fountains entirely designed by artists, uh, which, uh, ran, ran into a little bit of a maintenance issue because they had to tear apart the person's art to fix the drinking fountain as it years, uh, years went by and it aged. So we want to be careful about how we are integrating art, but recognizing that it is inspirational, even as playpieces in the community. It can bring people together, such as just looking at the way tables, instead of your traditional picnic tables, um, through colorful chairs or movable elements can actually integrate and bring people together. We're seeing a lot of recreation features, such as this disc golf course, that, uh, instead of your general disc golf, uh, catchments, instead become art sculptures to really create a theme and sense of identity for the park. And certainly, performing arts across the parks, through the parks, and only, again, at amphitheaters or in community centers. But we're seeing a lot of pop-up performances where artists as a, a way to express themselves are doing performances within green spaces or plazas. Interpretive elements to tell the story, in the case of this community, about the butterflies that are disappearing. So in conjunction with their pollinator patches in green space that the park system was emphasizing, they added art and interpretive signage to tell the stories of the butterflies in their parks. We also really strongly see a trend of what we call experiential art. This one framed as the blunderdash race. But again, involving, uh, opportunities in colors and bringing in a different culture here is part of that experience. Certainly, arts and crafts are part of the programming that's provided, and these can be offered indoor, outdoor, as part of community festivals and holiday fairs. As terms of the revenues that we heard about, uh, earlier from the public comments, we are seeing a huge trend towards supporting local artists by providing art markets. Uh, certainly art events, craft fairs and shows, not only around holidays, but through the summers, again, to help market the local art that's being created. Participatory art also takes the, the many different forms. Uh, some of you may be familiar with Candy Chang, who created this mural years ago that said, "Before I die." And it allowed people on this grand chalkboard to write what they would like to do in parks. We've actually used this as some of our outreach activities at times in Parks Master Planning, where it's, "My vision for this park is..." and let people create, imagine, envision, anything that it wants to be. Because that's what art is really all about. We see a lot of art, murals very popular as a way of interpreting the history, what has been there before, sometimes as a reminder when a building goes in of the people and the place that has existed there before. And certainly, art in memoriam, memorials for, uh, groups of people or even places that are important as part of our local heritage. We're also seeing grand connections between events and art is a way to brand your city and create an identity. This is Spokane that wanted to be known more for its, uh, health and activity, and in particular for the running and the big races that they provide. But to support that, there's art throughout the city that really emphasizes that running culture. A lot of people think of art in terms of those iconic elements that, uh, you may recognize. And these are important, but really, it is not the only way to identify your specific identity for the community. Because there's lots of conversations around, should our art have standards that are, uh, wide open, abstract? Should it be reality-based? And so identifying how you want to symbolize your community is important. But allowing artists that creative element to determine what fits in your community is as important as well. In parks, we often talk about connections to nature and, uh, how important it is to be able to integrate people into green space as well as to support wildlife. Art is an important way to do both, a reminder of the wildlife that's there, as well as creating the, the people-oriented interests. Art can be abstract, art can be realistic, art can be humorous and whimsical. Again, really just to get people in the moment and out of just, uh, the stress, honestly, that we have all been dealing with in the last few years. We've seen things such as just throwing a giant red inflatable ball in a park and leaving it there to see how people will react, to remind you that parks are for fun and to play. Art's definitely part of that. Art can be poetry, such as integrated on the stairs in this park here. Art is also mobile, and that it's important to be able to have all people experience art. And sometimes that means bringing art, art programs, uh, a technology and learning programs such as graphic arts to people who wouldn't otherwise have access to them. We're seeing that as a big trend. So just like the bookmobiles of the past, there are now artmobiles that are around communities to bring art, not only to youth, but even to senior centers. Certainly, using art as a way to brand your trails, for example, or your parks, in terms of the signage that's provided, is an important piece of that identity. And we're seeing it not only art in terms of, you know, the, the pieces that are in parks, the permanent, but we're also looking at the expansion of digital art and social media and the roles that cities are now taking, such as this is in San Antonio, Texas, and making sure that they are publicizing local artists and sharing their works. But we're also realizing in a COVID era, art can be healthy. Uh, this is a plaza in Portland, Oregon, where as a reminder for your social distancing, they used art as a way to emphasize the need to remain spaced in a plaza that typically is otherwise very crowded. So art is a, a statement, a public statement about your community is something that we see frequently. And then, of course, there is this, this programmatic piece. And in many communities, it sounds like you have a, a plan recently completed that talks about, uh, providing art programs for youth and integrating youth into programs. We're seeing this as a, as a huge, uh, initiative across many cities, is they're trying to really build the artists of the future and connect people to art. So that, uh, in Sacramento, we just ran, as part of the master planning process, an art contest, asking people to describe the ways in which they see parks. And the image you see of the sun breaking through the trees and the picnic tables was a youth artist who just wanted to showcase not only the beauty of the parks, but also the diversity of people that are supported there. Another key thing we're seeing is not only exhibits and shows for local artists, but also bringing in people such as poet laureates for your city as a way to elevate art, literary arts, or bringing in an artisan residence. Uh, a competitive process that allows, uh, artists locally to have the opportunity to compete, to have a forum and a platform by which to share about their art with the community. So I'm sure that you all have seen all of this, but we just wanted to kind of start the conversation around the ways in which you all see art in Santa Ana and the nexus that it has between Santa Ana's parks, facilities, programs, and events. And so I'm happy to take questions, or I would also love for you to be able to, to respond to these discussion questions that we have up on the screen.
I have a question. I think we have amazing creatives in our city who can do brilliant things, many of which are around what, what you proposed. I think the biggest thing is, how do we allow our artists to be, uh, activated or be empowered to activate this kind of programming in the community? So to, to give them a chance to give proposals or options to make our parks places our community wants and needs to be.
Excellent comment and question. A lot of cities, as part of a public art program, develop a, a process by which commission is involved in evaluating proposals for arts. A lot of cities are really working to integrate that percent for the arts funding mechanism so that anytime a new park is developed or new recreation facility, that there's a certain portion of that funding that is invested in art associated with that new development that then becomes, uh, opportunity for local artists to get involved. So there's, there's lots of different ways that, that we could explore as part of this.
So you're developing the plan, and this could be part of our recommendations to put in a process for activating artists to, to submit projects and things for parks. Is that what I hear you saying?
Exactly. The idea of this plan is, uh, we're at the early phases where we're identifying what, what are the needs, where are the gaps, what's missing, and what could we be doing? And then from there, we'll create those recommendations.
Great, thank you.
I have, uh, two comments. Um, one, I just want to thank you for bringing the image of Grand Park in Los Angeles, um, into the mix here. Um, I think it was such an interesting way that they use those pink chairs. It's a very small and subtle detail, but you always know when you're looking at Grand Park, uh, because of this little thing. And so my, my comment is really that I hope the vision for Santa Ana Parks Rec, community, uh, community service, uh, well, I hope that, um, this organism, you know, your work will help advance ideas that do create an identity for Santa Ana in some kind of way like that. So it's not very expensive, but it's small gestures that, uh, give the city a cohesive feel, possibly. And then the second piece, um, you know, I appreciate that experiential art was a category, but I would like to see more arts and cultures in Santa Ana be thought of through the lens of how we experience it. So rather than just the quantity of art that we're able to bring to Santa Ana, um, you know, uh, on different surfaces that maybe are not thought of as art spaces, I hope we remember that we want to create an experience for the art so that families like mine with small children feel safe going to look at a large mural, but it's not in a place like on a, you know, not necessarily on a busy street, but sometimes we put art in just any location that's available. And so I want us to be cognizant of, uh, if we create an experience for the artwork that we advance, um, then it really becomes more transformative for folks.
Excellent point. Uh, looking at the way we use our park guidelines to really ensure that art is accessible, just as a recreation feature would be accessible. And it's interesting how many times, uh, in parks, you have an opportunity to touch art versus, you know, display arts in museums, you're often discouraged from touching it. So we want to make it as interactive and engaging as possible.
I guess I want to piggyback on Commissioner Russell's comment about, how do we activate the community to give input on the kind of public art they'd like to see and the experiences they'd like to have? Um, because there were so many directions to go. And we have, we have all of these things, literary arts, youth programming, the, the natural, all, the murals are one of our primary focuses, but also there are other things that we have, uh, coming up. And so how is the Parks and Rec thinking about providing, getting community input at, broadly? I know you did a survey, but in specific to the experiences, like Commissioner Russell was talking about, what they want to see and how they experience the arts and culture in the parks?
Uh, at this point, um, there was not a, a specific component of this project to look in detail at arts. We have worked in some communities where we are creating not only a Parks Master Plan, but an Arts Master Plan to go hand-in-hand with it. And so I, I think the idea is that this first pass really helps us understand where priorities lie. Um, certainly, if there are, is there a huge interest in the arts? And that comes forward as a, a key recommendation. The next step would be then to look more specifically at ways to identify community needs for art.
We do have an Arts and Culture Master Plan, which is five years in, years at the beginning. Perhaps we could, could take a look at the nexus between the two plans and see how we can leverage what's already in our plan and, and tie it to what you're doing.
I love that.
Um, first of all, thank you so much for this really wonderful and, um, comprehensive presentation. Um, I really appreciate seeing not only like local art, um, for example, the, um, memorial to the Vietnamese soldiers in Westminster. Um, I believe that is at Freedom Park in Westminster.
Yes.
But also, I, I really appreciate just being like the range that art can take. Um, I know that Santa Ana is a very young city. And so as a part of that, um, one of the things is that people who live in Santa Ana are constantly redefining what it means to be, what it means to live in Santa Ana, what Santa Ana means, um, and what art means in Santa Ana also. And I believe that for a long, long time, Santa Ana has a really, has had a really strong counterculture in art as well. Um, and so I'm wondering, how do we foster and continue to encourage that counterculture art? The stuff that wouldn't necessarily be in museums, but that is so vital and so indicative of what it means to be in Santa Ana.
I think that that is, uh, an important, uh, thing for us to be able to explore more in conjunction with you. You know, it's interesting, there are cities with various themes. I think of, you know, Portland, Oregon, uh, keep Portland weird. Uh, they certainly are looking at ways of emphasizing that counterculture and that, the sense of identity. Uh, but in some communities, it's more about the heritage of the city. And so it's really understanding and maybe as part of the vision language that we create for this plan, understanding what that vision and brand is that we can communicate through parks and through art.
Also, I, I know that, um, this will be brought up later, but I, as I understand, Parks and Rec does usually invite, um, the chairs of certain, uh, commissions to join within their, uh, their meetings, right? You have certain amount, number of meetings. And so I think that's where we can also put our input.
So, but sorry, and that we have a commissioner who's headed to Texas. There was, uh, several of these images that were from Texas. Uh, the dog park, for example, is Addison, which is just on the north side of Dallas.
Oh, we can't see that image, Cindy. If, I don't know, you have to switch screens or something.
Uh, it was earlier.
Oh, oh, I see. But also to follow up, when I, what I just said is that, um, Frank was on that. You had attended a few meetings himself before he resigned. You had attended a few meetings himself before he resigned.
Any other comments, questions, or insights that we should take into consideration as we move forward in our planning process?
Can you go back to the slide with the process and just remind us what, at what point in the process are we now and what's the next step?
So at this point, we are entering phase two where we've conducted the community outreach, but now we begin the technical assessment of needs. So this is where we looks at, look at gaps in services, the shortage of green space, for example, or how many sports fields and sports courts are needed. And as part of that, we look at programs and services, including how well parks are maintained, but also aspects of identity, how well do Santa Ana's parks encapsulate the identity of the community? And is there things that we need to do or add to the parks to enhance them or add to programs, whether in community centers or outdoors?
I do have one more comment for you all to keep in mind as you continue to build out these recommendations. One thing that I have found that isn't always taken into account is access. And what I mean by access in this case is specifically for disabled folks and folks who use mobility aids, for example. Lots of interactive pieces of art, whether they be like on playgrounds or whether they be up on a stage is often really inaccessible. Or if there is a ramp, it's out of the way, actually takes more energy to actually be able to access it instead. And so I just really want to make sure that for anyone who uses a wheelchair or even for strollers, for example, that is something that is centered when these recommendations get built out, especially because parks ought to be for, you know, everyone, and particularly families with small children and any families with people who need mobility.
Excellent point. Certainly ensuring that, that parks and art are accessible are an important part. Our company does a lot of ADA transition planning, and so we do help communities ensure that they are meeting the needs of all people. One of the things though, that that triggers in terms of making sure things are accessible, it's not just about ADA accessibility, but language accessibility or in terms of art, the affordability of art experiences as well. So we certainly want to keep our eyes on all of those. If there are no other comments or questions, we'll conclude this portion of the presentation and move to the next agenda item.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Cindy.
The third item is the discussion of the ARPA funding for arts and culture. So Tram, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair McNair. Let me share my screen. Oops. Bianca, can you allow me to share my screen, please?
You should be able to know.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay. So. All right, so as in the, in the agenda where we will be talking about the ARPA funding, thanks to a lot of your effort, we were able to get some money. Although a lot of it is not yet like locked in stone, but I, I'm going to go over the general aspects of this funding. It's called, well, we got funding from the new federal funding related to COVID-19, which is called the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA. And the city of Santa Ana has received 128.3 million dollars total, but that's to be spent over five years. And the city is calling it Revive Santa Ana Spending Plan. The first phase that we're receiving is 80 million. So that's the projects that I'm going to be talking about. Okay, so there's going to be a second phase later. And all, one very important note to, to remember is that all expenditures of ARPA funding must have a nexus or a very specific, important connection to COVID-19 and its impacts on the community. So it cannot be spent for just anything. It has to relate back. So, and with that, the US Department of Treasury has issued this qualified use of funds. So I only took out this section so that you can focus on that. But if you'd like, I can send you the whole thing and you can read through all the pages and all documents. So the uses of funds are stated very specifically here. It's for public health and.
We can't see your screen.
Oh, darn it. Okay, let me see. Okay. Did you see that first slide or no? This slide? Okay, so that's what I was talking about. So now we're moving on to the second slide and you'll see here and bear with me as I read through it, read through the entire this part. I think it's just important that we all hear it out loud. So the first qualifying criteria is public health. It has to be connected to public health somehow. As relevant, describe how funds are being used to respond to COVID-19 and the broad, broader health impacts of COVID-19 and the COVID-19 public health emergency. Item B, negative economic impacts. As relevant, describe how funds are being used to respond to negative economic impacts of the COVID-19 public health emergency, including to households and small businesses. Item C, criteria C, services to disproportionately impacted communities. As relevant, describe how funds are being used to provide services to communities disproportionately impacted by the COVID-19 public health emergency. Criteria D, premium pay. As relevant, describe the approach, goals, and sectors or occupations served in any premium pay program. Describe how your approach prioritizes low-income workers. Criteria E, water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Describe the approach, goals, and types of projects being pursued, if pursuing. And finally, criteria F, revenue replacement. Describe the loss in revenue due to COVID, to the COVID-19 public health emergency and how funds have been used to provide government services. So as you can see, it's not explicit how, how art can fit into it. But we all know that art is very connected to the health and economic recovery of our city. So, so we have come up with the following, uh, the following potential projects that can be applied and that can use this funding. The first is a memorial, the memorial to lives lost. The second one is investing in the Artist Grants Program. And that's the art, the grants, that you've all heard of for the past five, six years. And murals on city parking structures. The timeline is starting now, August 2021, until the end of June, which is generally around the time that that first phase is going to be over. So it will take this entire time to use this money. And we're, we're starting now with this meeting with, you know, getting your input, feedback to develop the RFP and to see how we can move forward with these projects. And June 2023 should be the final payment for all of, of the projects. Okay, so now we're going to talk about memorial, the memorial, memorial to lives lost. We're going to talk for each of these, for each of these projects, we're going to talk about theme. But for the memorial, we, we need to add in location, different from the other two. But we're all going to talk about theme, applicant eligibility, and review panelists. So the first item under Memorial Loss is theme. So we can start discussion now. I'm not going to wait till the end of the, of the presentation to start. I think we can just start talking about the theme that must be related to health and economic recovery for the pandemic. So if anybody wants to throw out something and then we can, I will take notes and then we can, you know, gather all this information. Any ideas you want to throw up?
Well, if I may, this is Fernando. I, I myself, I got, about a month ago, I got, I had COVID. I, it was on a Friday night where I was exposed and by Monday, I was already feeling symptoms. It was on the 19th last, you know, a month ago exactly. And it was not fun at all. I mean, it was, it was, I've, I've never been that sick in my life before. It was 11 of us that, that got it that same, that same day. And I ended up giving it to my peers, my family. And, you know, some of us ended up in the hospital. I mean, it, it was not fun at all. It was, yeah, and it really put me out for, you know, a good, you know, two weeks. I'm still trying to catch up, you know, back, you know, back to work and, you know, getting back to work and all that. So this is, I feel this is important. So I just wanted to, just, just to comment on that real quick. It's important to spread awareness. I, I'll be honest with you. I was one of those who didn't always wear a mask, kind of ignored the whole thing for a while just because I, I didn't get it. So I thought I would never get it and I was wrong. And also, I wasn't vaccinated. I was not vaccinated. Those, some of my peers that were vaccinated recovered quickly. So these are just some messages that I, I, you know, that I want to see be passed along because I get it. You know, there's some people that just don't believe it because it didn't happen to them. But it happened to me and it happened to a lot of my, my friends and family. So I think this is a good, a good thing that, and a good opportunity that the city has.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner Olavadas. Commissioner Russell?
I shared this with you when we talked, but I want to make sure I share with everyone, which is, it feels premature to imagine a memorial when we are, we don't know how far even we are in this pandemic. I just happened to be at a doctor's visit this morning and the doctor was describing how, you know, the Delta variant vaccination will probably not be released until next year. And so, you know, if you were to consult medical professionals, I don't know that they would say, we're ready to commemorate what we've lost and who we've lost. I was, so I'm curious if the title or the theme can be adjusted at all. As an example, maybe it could be a tribute to the public healthcare workers or to the people who, you know, decide to wear masks, for instance, as an act of care. You know, I, I work with youth in the K-12 system and I know a lot of the teachers I work with and students are, see, they see masks in that light. And it could be a memorial that is a tribute to all, how all, we're all in on this and we're all taking care of each other.
Thank you.
I would definitely like to, to piggyback off of what Commissioner Russell was saying. I definitely agree with that. I don't expect COVID to be over anytime soon. From everything that I've read, officials and epidemiologists are saying that we should expect COVID-19 to be endemic sooner rather than later. And so rather than a memorial, I think something that pushes forth some sort of community action, like Commissioner Russell saying, some sort of like community care, this idea that when we act for the wellbeing and benefit of all in our community, we all benefit. Or like this idea of interdependency as opposed to independence, I think is something that I would definitely be on board with.
Thank you, Commissioner Vu.
A point of clarification. I love those ideas and I'm absolutely in alignment. I want to know though, Tram, do we have the ability to deviate from what has been designated Memorial to Lives Lost?
I'm not sure. To that, because. I think it could be open to discussion. Why not?
Okay, yeah. So we can make a recommendation to the council just to, with these other ideas? Okay, I, I, then I think we need to move forward with something like that if the other commissioners are in alignment with that.
I will be sure to consult my council member representative on that point.
Any other input?
Is location the next slide?
Yes. So are we finished kind of talking about this, this part, the theme? Or is there any other themes you'd like for council to consider or, you know, whatever? Okay. Then we'll move on. So next one is location. And with any memorial, it needs to, I mean, with a city-funded memorial, it should be on city-owned property and/or land as it, it's just easier to maintain and all of that. And that's something for you to consider is a visibility, people gathering and the maintenance issues, you know. So I will show you, well, these are three general places that the city owns and has a lot, has more control to say yes or no for a memorial to be placed on. And more, it doesn't have to be a statue or sculpture. It could be many, take many different forms. We're all artists, so we know it can be very creative in different ways. The first one here is the train station on Santa Ana Boulevard, all the different parks around. So there's 22 around the city and it doesn't have to be one huge thing either. It can be placed all around perhaps, you know, so let's be creative somehow, you know. Or City Hall, the Civic Center Plaza, behind City Hall, there's a fountain. It's called Starburst, I think Plaza or something. There's a fountain there, there, and we'll, I'll show you the next. Here's the train station, just in case for those who can't recall exactly how it looks. So there's, you know, open areas here. Folks can, you know, as folks come and go, obviously you get a lot of traffic. And it's also very open to the public so they can access it for free and all of that. And then here are the different locations of park locations. And this, this map is right on their website. So you can just, you know, search and all the maps are listed. It's very easy to find. So you can see it is pretty evenly distributed around. And finally, this is the, the plaza I was talking about. Here's the fountain behind, behind our city hall there. So any, any preference or do you want to discuss some of these locations? Oh.
So if I recall correctly, the two zip codes in Santa Ana that were the most heavily impacted by COVID were 92703 and 92701. And so if possible, I would like to have whatever memorial we end up doing at least feature in one or both of those zip codes in some way. But my other suggestion might be to have, if it's possible, seven locations, one in City Hall, then one in a park in each ward.
Okay.
I would like to add, to underscore what Commissioner Vu said. I'm inclined to think about the parks as a way that it's got more access for more people to see them and to experience them and to appreciate and, and it would give us opportunities to have various unveilings that we can bring people together to in memoriam, to honor the, whoever, however we're doing it, whether it's healthcare workers or however, whatever approach we go.
Okay. Any other input or insights? Okay. Oops. Then we're going to now move on to applicant eligibility. So this becomes a little trickier, talking about minimum qualifications for those who are going to apply for this. Should there be some kind of residency? By parameters, do, do you want it to be? I mean, some op, some options out there are just keeping it strictly for local Santa Ana artists. We can widen it a little bit to be Orange County, Orange County artists. We can widen it a little bit more to be Southern California, or we can say even nationwide. If you're, are we open to a nationwide search for? Or we can say even nationwide. If you're, are we open to a nationwide search for folks to create art that will, you know, give tribute to or whatever it is that we decide?
If I could speak.
Yes, please, Commissioner Hernandez.
Yeah, so I I just, I do think that we should open it up. Uh, I mean, it should be given priority, of course, to Santa Ana artists, um, but you know, we want something to look really nice. We want somebody that has some sort of experience with it. So, you know, ideally, something that, but would like to for it to open up to to be on. So whether it's Southern California, Orange County, ideally someone local, but yeah, those are my thoughts.
I'm personally inclined to err on the side of um Southern California as opposed to just Orange County, knowing that we've had so many people in Santa Ana uh who have lived in Santa Ana before, who have families who live in Santa Ana, who come to Santa Ana still for work, for pleasure, um, who like are parts of the community here, who have had to uh move away for whatever circumstances. And so I I I would recommend doing Southern California as a residency requirement as opposed to just in the one.
I love that, both those ideas. I'm curious if we could do it in some way where the applicants demonstrate some connection to Santa Ana, whether they've been involved in some way, lived here in the past, have a tie to this community in some way that that we could consider their work. Given giving priority to our local artists, perhaps, and then as Commissioner Hernandez said, opening it broader with a connection to Santa Ana.
Nice. Okay. Also, age, a general age restriction that we usual, a minimum age qualification is eighteen. I believe that we could make it higher and it's usually because whoever is creating the art is going to be responsible for this, is going to have to uh provide insurance as you see the next minimum qualification. And as you heard Sonia given her presentation, is that nowadays the city requires that certificate of insurance plus the um whatever than the other part, I forgot what it was, like added on additional insured adding the city. So that's, we won't be able to budge from that. So that's why we set the age higher, you know, because they're closer to being adults, I suppose.
Yeah, so speaking of this uh, this particular thing of the the per- the liability insurance, I I understand that it is quite a headache uh to be, you know, having to to manage that with artists. So you know, I I mean, perhaps this is not the the moment to talk about it, but just kind of putting it out there that being able to figure out which which ways in which the, you know, the city, um, perhaps even with the ARPA money or somehow they'd be able to pay for that liability insurance, that would really uh open up the ability for artists, for more artists to apply for the grants that, you know, come out of the Art and Culture Commission. So, yeah, that's a a big, big uh blockage for, especially for up and coming artists.
Echoing Commissioner Hernandez, this is absolutely an issue and I'm wondering if there isn't some kind of collective insurance o- opportunity that um that artists in locally could sign up into, like what you're saying. That's what I I was looking at, that o- opportunity for in the school district, just because it precludes a lot of artists who could do this, but the cost to do the business is prohibitive. And then that leads it to bigger, more commercial, which, you know what I mean? So how do we make it accessible for all artists of every situation to be able to participate with the best options for our community?
Yeah, and it also makes it um once you, once you're as an artist, once you have insurance, it actually gives you a leg up when you're applying for for any other projects. Um, you know, so that's also, no, you're also helping out the artists, you know, just to to make a living, really.
Yeah, but but just to be clear, this ensures we'll only cover this particular project if we do, if ARPA funding could cover.
Got it.
Which is a good thought, yeah. But at least it'll help with this project. And another possibility, especially because we're opening, if we go down the road of opening this up to the field of wider net, you know, in Southern California, to create a possible mentorship program for local artists, you know, and that way, um, as Commissioner Vu has told me, other or showed me an experience of other artists from other disciplines can now just learn a different craft, you know, so if somebody that this person used to be a something else, a muralist or somebody else and wants to now work on sculptures, you know, or art installations, they can cross-train and so it would provide that kind of giving back to the community too. Um, but we'll see, you know, as this unfolds and what what can happen. Okay, so we're going to move on to um the review panelists. Um, and you may have the same responses to the rest of the other, you know, the other projects as you do to this one, or maybe not, but um, as for as with all of our art projects, it's a very open um and open to the public uh process. So any anybody can apply, I mean, as long as you meet the minimum qualifications. Um, and so we need review panelists to review all these app applicants. And you, we can talk about how you would like to select these review panelists. It can be all of you again, sitting on all three or whichever ones you want. Um, and then, um, or uh you commissioners would appoint or suggest a panelist that can be available and willing to volunteer to to be on this review panel, um, or we can do open calls to public like we have in the past. And then staff selects um from from all the applications. Um, as to who would be on the, who would be most, how how would this panel be balanced? Or we can do a combination of all of this. So perhaps you think you've want to sit in on one or two panels and um you have other folks that in your network that you think would be perfect to sit on other panels. And then whatever's left over, we can still do an open call to the public.
For clarification, Tram, what's, what, how big should a panel be?
I would say no more than five.
No more than five. And we're going to have three panels for the various pots, right, that we're dressing. So it'd be really challenging that as commissioners to be on every one. I I am recommending that we consider appointees that that each of the commissioners can make to represent them and we know people in the community. Um, that, and I'm open to hearing what the other commissioners think.
When it comes to appointees, um, would they have to be Santa Ana residents? Would they, would we go beyond that? Um.
No, they don't have, I don't think panelists necessarily should be, and most cities do that. They they bring in anybody who's qualified to sit on this panel, is if you have the the expertise or something that would qualify for that. And in fact, it helps a lot when you're not part of the city. There's less of the um, a conflicts of interest. Um, and not only that, but now we're exposing a lot of our artists to other folks who might take an interest, you know, and and call them back for other other projects. Okay, any other input?
Looking ahead at the um three different panels that we will need to do. Um, I I know this is a little out of order, but I would recommend that um the commissioners um be the ones to review the artist grants and then for this memorial and the um garage murals, we can explore other options instead.
I'm sorry, I can't, I I didn't quite get everything you said. So which ones are the art, the commissioners going to sit on?
All right, uh, I I would recommend that the commissioners sit on the panel for the artist grants in particular and then for the memorial. Um, I I think an appointee process um for the the panelists would be good. Um, and we can explore some sort of other option for the garage mural.
In fact, um, for the appointees, I really would like to see people from the medical community involved in some way. Um, you know, we do have quite a few hospitals, um, and I think their perspective um would be very about, would be invaluable on on this point.
So if if the commissioners don't know somebody to recommend, would we fill in the gaps by putting a open call?
Yes, we can do an open call from the beginning. It doesn't have to be, wouldn't have to wait until there's nobody because then there's not enough time. We're just put it out there. We have a pot, you know, we have a uh a roster to to draw from. And then we can go down that list. But I'd like to make a comment about um Commissioner Vu's uh suggestion about artist grant. The only thing, the the one for artist grant, though, however, that one um ha- you historically has been lo- uh local Santa Ana artists only because it's about producing, I mean, as long as they do something for Santa Ana, you, we'll get to that. And so the the issue that we may run into is that most of you will know a lot of those artists. And so there's a lot of conflict of interest that has arisen in the past, and that's why we actually moved away from um having, yeah. So in fact, the, if you want to sit, I think the best is to be memorial, the the opposite of what you said, Commissioner Vu, the memorial and the the mural. Okay.
Um, several more question there. Um, I haven't gone to submittable yet, um, but I will this weekend. Isn't that blind judging or did I remember that wrong?
No, it's not blind judging. You see the name, you see everything.
Is there any way that we could so that that conflict of interest is at least um reduced?
You could, but um I think there there, I think there are ways that you you'll be able to still identify, you know, by style alone because you're so familiar with the artists around here. You know, and there's only so many artists that apply every time when it's when it's set for just local artists. Okay, we're going to move on.
Um, yes. Like make a comment.
Did you want me to come?
Oh, yeah. Yes, I did. I'm I'm just collecting myself. So I I I I do understand uh where Commissioner Vu is coming from, um, and and I also understand the conflict of interest. So I guess um just kind of just, I guess, trying to define that term. Conflict of interest means somebody whom you have received or, you know, or working with as a partner, but oh, and um and, you know, as in maybe you were both part of a nonprofit. Um, or perhaps like a spouse or or some kind of family. Is this, is that the gist of it?
Well.
But which most friend would not fall under if you were not.
Not necessarily a friend shouldn't fall under that, but it's also sometimes perception is reality, as we've seen in the past conflicts. It's just, i- i- it's just cleaner, you know, I mean, yeah, technically, conflict of interest is when you receive any kind of financial gain from that applicant. Um, and of course, if you're married to this person and um, and also um, if you consider them very sort of like your best friends, you know, if this is your best friend, you're not going to be objective. Anybody that you you believe you cannot be objective in scoring, that's going to be a conflict of interest because you're very biased. You know, either way, or your best friend or your worst enemy, you know, so if you hate somebody so much, that's always going to cloud your judgment. So that alone, and if people start recusing, you know, then it's like now we're down to two people voting, you know, three people. So I think that's why it's, it makes it more complicated when it's so close to home.
Okay, yeah, that that makes sense. And so then I I would then suggest that uh, yeah, we're we're really specific and, you know, particular about picking or appointing uh folks from, you know, either the community uh or or perhaps even, yeah, outside of the community that um I will just focus squarely on the merits and the the this, you know, the quality or the the re- relevancy of of the art proposed, not for uh, so I think that's a good idea. But, yeah, I I I, one thing is that uh, you know, depending on folks' availability or time, yeah, serving on all of us does not, you know, make the most sense. So uh, yeah, we should start get casting the net out there and and getting calls for, or putting the call out for folks to to apply for this uh as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, we're going to move on. But we can come back to any of these points if you, a thought comes to you later. Okay, so now we're moving on to investing in the artist grants, and this is the one that I know a lot of folks in the community are looking forward to. And we, again, every year, um, since I began, we would have a theme and that helps focus the artists so that they can create something or ha- if they already have in mind something that would benefit the city. Um, and so this year, obviously, it needs to be related to health, the health and economic recovery of the pandemic, from the pandemic. Um, now, uh, applicant eligibility, same idea. So I think with this one, again, historically, it has been you need to live or work in Santa Ana. And we, I think we even extended to study. If you live, work, or study, so if you're a student at SAC, say, and you're creating something for the community. Um, but we also say, um, uh, let me go, let me move forward to this one. The grant, this grant program was started in twenty fifteen, so about six years ago. Um, so we did it every year except for last year because of the pandemic, obviously. Um, the city has always dispersed, um, oops, I spelled it incorrectly, dispersed seventy thousand dollars. Um, and the 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 purpose and uh of this grant was to distribute small but impactful funds to individuals and artists, uh, to individual artists at art organizations slash cooperatives. And it's to help give them something so that it elevates their their art, you know, some sometimes folks, they just need um a little bit of that boost. So this is not to necessarily fund their art or art career. We're not paying for, we're not purchasing their art. We're not hiring these artists. This is to elevate the the city's artists, take them to the next level, take their project to the next level, give them um an opportunity to participate in a grant and um, and also develop a project they may be working on. So it's to help, help support it, you know, it's a an added bonus to what they're already doing. Um, and we say artists living or creating work in Santa Ana. So somebody can live in Orange or Long Beach, but they said, you know, they could say, I'm doing this um art installation in Santa Ana. It has to be in Santa Ana, whatever project they're doing, and it needs to be free to the community. So they could do a theater piece and they can charge for the rest of the time, but they can stay, these two weekends are free to the city, you know, to the to the residents of Santa Ana or whatever. So, or free to the public. So that's what we fund. So we'll fund those two weekends, say, you know, in their whole project. Um, and as far as nonprofit organizations and collaboratives go, it it should be a five oh one C three nonprofit um with an arts and culture focus that again serves the the San Ana communities. Um, and historically, this is how we have funded the uh you, you know, each of the applicants for for artists, it's up to five thousand, disregard emerging, just individual artists, five thousand. And um for organization collaboratives, up to ten thousand. And it's done on a reimbursement basis. So we reimburse the expenses. We do give initial funding to help get you started, to buy supplies or whatever you need. Um, but it's, you have to show receipts for everything that you um in order to get the full amount of whatever you're awarded. So just to give you a background, because I know not everybody is familiar with the artist grant. But any questions on how we've run the art, this artist grant in the past? But this this year for through ARPA, we'll definitely get a lot more than seventy thousand. Just to let you know. So either we'll fund, we can either fund a uh many more artists or and organizations, or we can give them more each or both. Okay, let me go back to this slide quickly. So the residency, we, you know, we say it doesn't have to be, but you need to demonstrate very clearly that this project is for Santa Ana folks and it needs to be in a public space accessible, so it can't be in somebody's house. You know, and they, yeah. And same thing with age is still eighteen and above and same thing with insurance. And this one, I think we do try to help support um as part of their award, taking into consideration how much their insurance would be. Um, so review panelists, can, um, are we kind of uh on the same page in terms of whatever you're saying for the other ones, but what we already previously discussed? We kind of discussed this already. Okay, moving on. Um, this is the garage mural set. The final project is the garage murals in downtown. This is an example of one where we would put um a mural where a mural where this big huge banner is or around it, you know, I mean, this is just showing you an example, but it could fill up this whole wall. And there's, I'm sorry, four, there's four garage murals in downtown. Potentially, we can do inside too. Again, these, none of this is set in stone yet. And the theme must be related to health and economic recovery from the pandemic. Do you want to think about themes for this one, which is different from the memorial? Or similar?
Could we consider very broad umbrellas like just give the theme of such, say, arts and healing or maybe arts and healing, you know?
Okay.
Or recover, I, because I think that's part of our recovery. We know that the first responders are the one who saves lives. And the second responders are the artists who are helping to heal the communities and bring them back together. So art heals or arts and healing, something to that regard. Other thoughts, I welcome.
Yeah, definitely like that idea by the chair. And I I also um think keeping it broad, and of course, it has to have some sort of, you know, aspect of of the health. And so the healing aspect of it, so it's kind of and I'm sure more things will come to mind and stuff, but somewhere where, you know, you're able to convey how you know, like a theater production or somebody doing, you know, a song or playing music or something, you know, creates joy and laughter to the people that are that are watching these things. So being able to have a representation of the various types of artistry. In specific, of course, in Santana. And being able to to, yeah, to show, show the the joy, which is what what he what the healing, I believe is is a tech.
I'd like to piggyback on that, too. One of the philosophical underpinnings of the California Arts Standards for Education is artsism means to well-being amongst other things. So if we're leveraging to what Vice Commissioner, Vice Chair Hernandez says, you know, just having those joyful engagements, whatever that looks like, to bring people together to that, that's a healing in itself. So there could be many ways that we could that artists could creatively demonstrate arts and healing or arts heal or something to that effect.
Just to clarify, it sounds like you're still talking about the artist grant, right? Which is fine. I do, I do like that.
Well, yeah, maybe that's the same thing for the murals.
For the mural too. Okay, so art brings joy, art, all of that too. Artists heal, art mean, art is a means to well-being.
Well, in the grants, in the grants, that you could do more things. It could be other opportunities, events and things, whereas the murals are going to be mostly visual, right? So we're limited in that capacity of how that's demonstrated.
There's a, there's a saying that we have in Spanish, and Spanish says, la cultura cura, which is culture cures. And so art is a part of of culture and a part of, you know, art and the beautiful culture that we have here in Santana. So some sort of phrase, some sort of phrase that encapsulates that. I mean, it's art, it's culture, it's it's just human connection. You know, manifested through through artistry.
I actually like that as the theme itself.
Yeah, I love that.
What, human connection?
No, la cultura.
Oh, la cultura, cura, okay.
Um, I just also want to say, if anyone's not as familiar with downtown, it is filled with, you know, in addition to Kitten Yara shops with clinics. There are clinics on virtually every corner. UCI has a very large clinic. There are dentist's office and I don't think we recognize our downtown as a place where many people come for these healthcare services. And so I don't know how that becomes part of this, but I do think it's something that we have an opportunity to highlight that in a way that we haven't done before.
Oh, great ideas, everyone. Thank you. That's true, to highlight those health.
Okay, I don't know how we do that exactly, but I'm always struck by how many clinics and dentists and I walk by ten or twelve on the way to school every day.
Okay. Okay. So for this one, it would be a similar discussion as with the quote unquote memorial. I'm just gonna call memorial now just to not confuse our terminology for this meeting. Applicant eligibility, are we still open to folks from like Southern California? Yeah, okay. Okay, anybody absolutely opposed to that? Okay. Same thing with the agent insurance, we'll try to work that out as much as we can. And similarly, we could have a mentorship program there for the those who may not be used to working such a large scale mural. Okay, and then same with the re-review panelists. And that's it. So any other discussions, anything else you want to, you forgot to say, you remember now? You want to go back to?
Do you have what you need from us tonight, Tram?
I believe so. Yeah, I think so. And so now it's just about determining if it's qualified, but I think I'm just still gonna move forward with the RFPs and putting out applications for potential panelists.
Do you want the, how do you want the commissioners to make recommendations?
Oh, you can email them to me.
Okay.
Yeah. Just email me all the contact information. If they agree to it already through you, that's even better. Let me know. Or if you want me to reach out to that person, I can do that, too.
Okay. So this concludes all our presentations, right? We're complete on that. So this moves us to our staff member comments.
Right? Yes.
That's you.
Yes, again, it's me. Okay, so I think that's it. My thank you for a great discussion. I have a lot to work on and I might come back again. And I probably will board you all drafts of the RFP. If you have any more feedback you want to give me individually. That's it.
Great, thank you. So this time is, it's time for commission member comments. Does the commission have any comments they wish to share? Commission members, please note that no member may speak more than once until all have had an opportunity to speak. Also, the commission may limit our comments to three minutes each. I am mindful of the time of being seven thirty-five PM. So does anyone have any comments to share?
I can start a talk for tonight. Um, so first of all, congratulations. Thank you, Commissioner Olivares, for the time that you've spent on this commission. I wish you nothing but the best of luck wherever that is that you go for the next several years to expand your your work, your scope, your skill, your expertise. And I hope that you will come back and, you know, like continue to show your love of Santa Ana out here. That's the first thing. Second thing, I do know that last meeting, we started forming was it an official ad hoc or was it just a I believe it was an official ad hoc subcommittee for the survey. Since there are members of the ad hoc who are no longer going to be continuing as commissioners, would we then appoint new members to that ad hoc if necessary?
Uh, yeah, Robin.
We, we're gonna table that for now, Commissioner Wu, and revisit that. I think we have some other things we need to focus on right now. And we will, we will definitely revisit that, but it's tabled for now.
Like, I just wanted to make sure we didn't forget about it. But other than that, I think this is really exciting news that we're getting the funding that we're having money again come through the Arts and Culture Commission, so that we can actually invest in our arts and culture here. And so I'm looking forward to all the things and reviewing the Southname art project proposals and all of this. I just, it's an exciting time.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Hernandez.
Thank you, Chair McNair. Like the sound of that. Yes, so I just want to echo Commissioner Wu's sentiments towards Commissioner Olivares. Fernando, you will be, you will be missed. You know, I I really had a, it was, it was great working with you. You know, starting the, or, you know, doing the mural ad hoc and, you know, just knowing how much you care about artists and about your community. And so, you know, it's a loss for the for our city, but it's is a game for another city. I'm sure you're, you will continue to do the amazing work you've done locally and, you know, and you're hopefully, the artwork that you've done locally will last forever. And so then you will, you know, always be part of our community, at least with the with the electric box that you did and and all the people that you touched and helped, which I know that were a lot. So I want to say that. And I hope that people on the council get to electing folks, you know, and and so, you know, big shoes to fill for definitely for Fernando. I want to mention the artist registry that we had talked about in the past. So, you know, that's something that we should probably be the table for the time being, given, you know, the limits of our current commission. But, you know, I just want to put it on the radar that it's something I feel strongly about. I know that there's other groups that have something like that, but I want this to belong to the city and particular to the commission so that we are in charge of that and and are, you know, expanding the net as quick, as big as possible so that all sorts of artists are included in that so that we can tap them when it's time for grants and all sorts of things and projects. The other thing I wanted to mention is the the ARPA money and and perhaps I should have made it earlier, but, you know, the the ability for us to use some of that money to 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 develop a mural restoration project. And so that if perhaps some of that money could go towards a lead who would get paid, but but then that person would be able to lead a team of volunteer mural, muralist or artist, you know, these, these could be youth, they could be amateurs, it could be folks in the community that have some free time that would like to do that. So I think that, you know, but of course, this would only happen if the original artist was not interested or around to be able to to do that restoration. But I think we can get creative with that ARPA money. So that we can use that for for that for Art Culture Commission mural restoration squad. So with that, happy Labor Day to everybody. And yeah, enjoy the last bit of the summer we got left. Thank you.
I also want to say to Fernando. And, you know, we've had many people in public comments request workshops and professional developments for our artists. And I do, I think the, it's very clear that there is a need there. And I'd like us, encourage us to think about little opportunities for us to capture funds that could be used for some kind of a series, maybe like a seasonal series to start or something like that. And I'll give an example. I know last night, Tuesday night, the city council approved the trash collection contract. And I believe there was some funds as part of that that were are going to artists or to an art campaign of some sort. I don't know, I haven't looked all the details just yet, but I'd love to see maybe a future encouragement for a contract like that to go for, you know, an artist workshop series or something so that our artists do feel equipped and prepared. And when it comes to something like insurance, they know where to go and so they get the most effective or economical deal they can, or maybe they can collaborate in ways. So I think we need to create more opportunities for them to network and to learn. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell. I think Commissioner Olivares was gonna speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few things. First of all, thank you for the kind words and and, yeah, I'm saddened that I that I am leaving. I mean, I'm Santa Ana has, it is, I'm born and raised here. I mean, and I'll always be from Santa Ana. So thankful for the opportunity to to work with, you know, with you all and and to serve my my community, my city. I I I will come back to visit as much as I can. But I'm extremely grateful to have worked with you all and and you know, to help out as much as I can. I'm trying to do one last thing for my community. I'm trying to catch up on, I've actually put some some personal projects to the side to work on a, I was, I was told, I was made aware of a of a tragic event that happened near downtown Santa Ana. And it's about a young eighteen-year-old girl named Eva Barrios. I'm sure you guys have seen her billboard around town. She was tragically shot and killed about this time around Labor Day two years ago. And they have not found her killer. So I got together with her mo- her mother, her family, Councilman Jonathan Hernandez. And we have worked on on creating a mural for her, but also to raise awareness for events like this that actually happen more, more than often. Just senseless crimes, senseless acts that take innocent lives. So you know, we're doing this mural hoping we can, you know, possibly find who did this. But also just to kind of raise awareness and possibly even prevent something from happening again. I was I was talking to a friend of mine who who, you know, we were talking about how our father sometimes give us, you know, quotes or or, you know, things and 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 he mentioned this quote that his father told him, saying that a moment of, you know, a moment of rage can cause that thousand years of tears. And it's so true with just incidents like with the young boy that also got, that also got killed on the freeway not so long ago. Hopefully, we can prevent something like this, you know, with this mural. The Artipai Warehouse is actually donating the paints. I'm I'm donating my time and, you know, to do this. And we are planning on doing an unveiling on the twenty-eighth, which is a Saturday around eleven AM. Now, so we welcome, you know, all of you to to participate for the unveiling and possibly, you know, maybe a ceremony. I'll, I'll be posting, you know, more details on my social media as we get closer to them, to that date. But yeah, that's something that I'm going to be working on. I'm working, it's at the Blue Lot located on First Street and and, oh man, I forgot the other street.
Birch.
First and Birch, yep, that's it.
Bush Street.
I know.
I'm sorry?
Bush, I knew it was a B Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's gonna be right there at the Blue Lot. Ruben is is really helpful, too. He's the one who's managing that, that space. Hope, you know, so it's just something that I wanted to bring up. But again, thank you all and everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, all the, to all the commissioners for your time and effort tonight. And I echo all the sentiments, counsel, Commissioner Olivares, wishing you all the best. And thank you so much for shining a light on social issues and how the arts do that, how the arts make us think and be aware. So thank you for your efforts in that. And I look forward to seeing what your next journeys surface and how you stay connected to Santa Ana. That said, I want to thank those who made public comments tonight. There were some very good concrete things to consider. I'm curious, Tram, if we could, how I Tran, if we could, how, I I know we have pockets of funding, so we have these three funding sources, we have another. Funding sources coming in for events, which we will have to talk about in the future and define those, you said this is kind of phase one out of the. Millions of dollars that are coming, this is eighty million to that effect that that, so there will be more. And I do want to take into consideration how we get sustainable funding for the Arts and Culture Commission office. That that we used to have the two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year, so how do we get back to that? And how do we inform our council on a regular basis about the work that the Arts and Culture Commission is doing? So that they understand their, who their appointments are and the work that we're doing, so I'm looking forward to how we can. Surface out an annual report of some sort to the city council and. If there's a way to find any of that funding, or if if somebody would apply to get funding for that economic impact study. I think months ago, this commission said we wanted to have that, but we really don't have any funding, and we don't, we can't pull it out of air, so I don't know how we would. Get the funding to do that, but I think that would be a wise investment. So we will continue to seek funding, and I'm so grateful and happy that we have a lot of work to do now, and that we'll be able to. Expand and see the healing that's going to come through the arts to our community through the things that are going to surface in this very fast time, so. Thank you to all of our support staff who is helping us on this journey, and thanks again to all the commissioners, and thanks to those of you who have spent time with us here tonight. And we're, we're grateful to be able to serve you in our community, so thanks for all you do and have a good night, this, how do I conclude this, sorry. This meeting, without any further comments. This meeting is adjourned, our next regular meeting is scheduled for September sixteenth at five thirty. So thank you, everybody, have a great night.
Good night, everyone.